Six o'clock. The eleven April twenty twenty-three City of Pickwa Planning Commission is called to order. If you could, with regards to chair comments, everyone here is very familiar with our proceedings. The only thing I would think we need to do is swear in. Sir, you want to be sworn in? Please raise your, stand and raise your right hand. Let it be known that all persons present to provide testimony at this eleven April twenty twenty-three City of Pickwa Planning Commission hereby swear or affirm said testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. All those agreement, in agreement, please say aye do.
Aye do.
All those opposed, say opposed, thank you, you may be seated. Okay, at this time, could you call the roll?
Gary Koenig.
Present.
Shannon Brandon.
Here.
Brad Bupp. Eddie Harvey.
Here.
Joe Wilson.
Here.
Okay, we, we have a quorum?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Brad Bupp.
Second.
All those in favor indicated by saying aye.
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 Brad Bupp is excused from the commission meeting today. We've all had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes of March fourteenth twenty twenty-three. Are there any additions, deletions, edits, suggestions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March fourteenth twenty twenty-three?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes of March fourteenth twenty twenty-three indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the meeting minutes of March fourteenth twenty twenty-three are approved. There's no old business, new business? If you could read the resolution?
A resolution for a request for a certificate of appropriateness for three twenty-five North Main Street for a new awning and facade paint colors. At the time of the submission, what I had received was, what you'll find on the page after the staff report. So there's a bulleted list of what is being proposed for this structure. Currently, what is in three twenty-five North Main Street is a photography studio. In the picture, you can see the Blue Boe Boutique, the former awning from the business that was there before. I believe there was a harvest pantry in there and I, I've gathered a list of, for a long time, I believe, between nineteen forty-eight and nineteen seventy-eight, it was a bank building. And then there's a range of things that have been in and out of that structure in the meantime. It is a Victorian Italianate building built sometime in the late nineteen, I'm sorry, late eighteen hundreds. And it seems to me to be, you know, very intact. I think it's evident that the facade has not been covered or, or changed recently. Or if it was covered at one time, it's, it's exposed now to its original state. The proposal includes a lot of maintenance and restoration work, tuck pointing and scraping off, you know, debris and caulk and things that have been accumulating on the surface of the building for a number of years. There's also, the, the bit, the property owner would like to remove the, the grid work from the storefront windows. He said those aren't original and were, were placed there just, you know, by a previous business owner. That was their decision. And some upgrades will be made to that, basically repair work to the, the whole facade that's on the first floor. Now, I gave you a second copy of what the, what the property owner basically would like to do at this point is save the decision about the colors for whoever will be occupying the building next. So he kind of would like to be able to allow them to, to choose colors that are pre-approved. So he's given us a range, so that's sort of what's before us in terms of making decisions. As far as the awning goes, I didn't receive very good detailed information about what might be changed there. I don't believe, but I do know that they're going to maintain the same frame and the same shape. So the final color would come with the color choice for the paint. So that is sort of where we are at. I'm definitely happy to see that it's Meyer Restoration working on this. They, they do a fantastic job with all of their buildings. So it's good news for that building to, to have this done again, which I saw in the library's file. I don't think that this level of, level of maintenance to the building has been done since ninety-eight. So it's a refresh. So you can flip through these, these color choices. There's a, you know, it starts with a palette of thunderous, which is like a darker green with a brighter green. We've got kind of the same theme going on in the next one, a really muted color with, with accents of a brighter color. And kind of on through the, the choices. There is one that is a lot more toned down, which is, you know, a gray and brown color palette, which honestly of, of these I would not recommend because there is a similar one both next door and there's another one just two doors down that has, uses brown and black. Although maybe all, all in concert, it, it would look fine. But yeah, if you have any, any suggestions or direction on, on choosing, if there's a suite of, of colors to choose from.
So the, like on the first one.
Yeah.
The thunderous, what, where would that color be placed on the structure?
Yeah, so what Mr. Vergalito described to me is that he'd like to essentially keep the pattern of colors, what you see now. So the paint on the, and that's, that's what we talked, we discussed is, you know, the level of detail should remain the same regardless of what, what paint colors are chosen. So it's the muted color that would be the most used by volume. So what's on the brickwork would be the muted color and then the accents would pop with the secondary color in front of it. Oh, Mr. Bupp is here. Hi.
Okay.
So are we?
Go ahead.
So are all of these, are, are you asking us to like pick a palette? Or are all of these colors the possible palettes?
That's a good question. I mean, I haven't had this request before to approve multiple color selections ahead of time. If there were some that you didn't like at all and thought that they weren't appropriate, it would be good to, to say that. I think, you know, the most flexible thing we could do is to approve multiple and allow them to choose from it so that they wouldn't have to come again for a request. But if there's, if there's any concern about that, they don't have the end user at this time and waiting a month to approve colors is not, you know, it doesn't put them in dire straits either, so.
My, my one question then is the one with the cut the mustard.
Yeah.
Is that the accent color or is that the wall color?
I believe it's the accent color.
Yeah, I think that the one in the back would be the wall.
Yeah, I think in each case, that's how it's meant to be.
The accent.
Okay, I guess I could live with that, but I, I'm not for painting the whole building yellow.
No, no. I'm not sure that any of them are all that great. I mean, I don't think I would pick any of them. They're, they're, they don't make sense. But I don't know why, why we don't have a standard set of colors that they pick and choose from and, and not make us go through this. This, this is kind of like matching a tie with a shirt and.
Sure.
They don't match.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah, and exterior paint colors for buildings are always really tricky. Like you, things that would look maybe ugly in a house actually look great on a house sometimes. So, you know, it's.
But.
Yeah, but I, I get that. And, and I think that's the direction we were planning on going is putting a, a suite of colors together. And it, it, it only gets difficult when you're talking about accent colors, I think, because in small, small quantities and, you know, proportionately, a brighter color seems okay. And you can see a lot of examples of that happening in, you know, I'm going to take Troy for example because I think a lot of their buildings are really well done with their colors. There's, there are plenty of examples down there of a color popping, even like pink. Even, you know what I mean? There's, there's certain colors down there that are very poppy and it's kind of on the eye of the holder. I wouldn't say some of those are more historic though. But the, the idea would be, here's a safe set of colors, you know what I mean? So we could pre-approve a list that feels comfortable to everybody. And I think you just have to have the understanding that, that pushes people toward those safe colors when you do that, so.
So the windows are gonna, the grid's gone, there's gonna be a large pane window in there.
Correct.
And the, the upstairs windows wouldn't change, they, they would just have the accent color. I, yeah, the, the, you were saying that the gray with the cut the mustard is in other buildings right down there?
Is in, no, it's not in other buildings. Not that I'm aware of, no.
Which was the one that you said is in the other building?
This one?
Yeah.
Oh, that one.
Wait, did I say that there, I don't think any of these are necessarily represented in buildings downtown right now.
Okay. I don't, I.
Oh, but maybe the.
Not as attractive to me.
Gray and brown, yeah, I see, yeah.
That's not very attractive to me. That's the only one, and I got one other.
I like the mustard either.
Yeah, that's, but that's.
Good.
You know, if, that's the only thing I'd pass on.
Sure, you know, what we can do is, I did ask either Meyer Restoration or Mr. Vergalito to attend tonight. So since they're not here, if there are some that you're comfortable with and would like to approve, that's fine. And if they, if they insist that they'd like to see the other colors, then they can come back and make that request. Or, you know, they want to propose new colors that aren't in front of you today, same, same thing.
The others are fine to me. I don't know, anybody else have any comments? Other than the mustard one?
I apologize for being.
That's okay.
Okay.
Late, what, what, what's going on?
So if you look at the screen behind you, we're looking at the Blue Boe Boutique slash Photography Studio. That's three twenty-five North Main Street. So what Meyer Restoration is doing is a lot of repair work on the facade and tuck pointing, removing old caulk. And then the, the actual substantive changes that are happening are taking the grid pattern off the windows, which is just added on. And I, I don't think it's original, I think it's just decoration. And then paint colors, what Mr. Vergalito, who owns the building, would like to do is, is allow, kind of sell the space to, you know, excited people by, by throwing in this idea that they get, they get to choose the paint colors because this is just happening, you know, at a good moment for them where they can coordinate that. So he's proposed a, a series of colored options.
Actually, even the yellow one, those are very historically accurate paint colors. Whether we like them or not, it's not necessarily the, the case as much as if, if they're how accurate they are. If you look at that book that lent you, there's a lot of colors in there that we wouldn't necessarily use today, but were appropriate back then because there was only so many paint colors. And they had a Victorian taste to them that was different than ours.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to keep that in mind just a little bit. That mustard is actually a very historical color. I think that these colors actually are from that book perhaps, or very close to, if I remember right, of all the pics that are in there that are actually from paint companies of that time period. So, again, even though we may not put them together, oftentimes though, there were three. Generally, there were three colors and the body of the building was the mid, middle color, not the lightest, not the darkest, and they use a light and a dark to pick out the details.
I could certainly advise them on that if that's, to pick a third color. But i- is it something that's like completely a third complementary color? Or is it in, you know, a chromatic of one of these two colors? Do you know what I mean?
Uh.
Like, would you throw in red to that mix or would you? I, I probably would think maybe not, or. Or if that's getting too complicated, then, you know, they can, they can come up with a rendering and, and get it approved.
I think, I think that would probably be the best thing is if.
Sure.
We have any concerns, but you may, you may express to them that the three is what we, we really like to see with the, with the body of the building being a medium tone versus a, and then a dark and a light as an accent.
Yeah.
Of these colors, you know, or of those colors in that, in that book.
Okay.
And putting them together is sort of the art of it.
Did they, so, so back in that kind of timeframe that you're talking about, did they really paint buildings black? The majority of the wall? I mean, I, I guess I can see that as an accent, but would you want it that dark?
Is that what that is? Mine, mine looks gray.
Well, like where this blue is, it's like diehard or dard, I guess, hunter green. I mean, it's like a really, really, really.
Dark.
Dark green, almost black.
No.
Because my concern is this faces west and, and my house, I know faces west and I have a white front door, but in, in our whole house, it's really hot.
Yeah, and that's why I would like to see them have the three. You know, so that they, they work just a little bit harder and add one that may be the, you know, or pay a little more attention to which one's going to be the base of the building. And, and the accent too is then not as quite as dominant and not quite as important. But they were way darker than ours. Now, don't confuse these with the same time period. They also had the painted ladies out west, which were very light, you know, but that's a whole nother. They didn't have that here.
Right.
You know, you know, and, and also the, uh, there was a cottage style, if you look in that book also, there was a cottage style paint schemes, which were very pastel. That's not very common around these parts either. And, and, and we're not talking a cottage anyway, we're talking a commercial building. So, you know, given that, I, I, yeah, you know, that's a concern. But they were much darker than what we're used, our taste are used, you know. In eighteen ninety-three, the Columbia Exposition in, in, in Chicago had a big influence, especially over the Midwest, because they did a lot of, they kind of set things back a little bit because the whole thing was classical architecture. So everything was white.
Everything was white.
And that's when all the farmhouses around here, that's when all the buildings and stuff, everybody whitewashed everything. So, so we've sort of all been affected by that, you know. We're just now kind of getting back to looking at the Victorians and looking at some of those darker colors. And, and yeah, they're quite striking because we're not used to seeing that as much. But, but yeah, that dark, that very darkest should still be something that is, is almost always the window frames. We're often.
Yeah, because see, I can see like, so.
That's why there needs to be three.
So like, you know, I know this as an awning, but just imagine if that wasn't an awning and that was just wood above that door. So looking at this one with the blue and the hunter green, so that hunter green would look kind of cool across that front and the window frames. If there was, and, and then the blue, like, like the medallions or whatever you call it and around the, see how there's like white in the window?
The huts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would look kind of cool with blue if there was a third color as the wall color.
There should be a third.
Okay.
There really should be.
But I don't know about that yellow if it's like.
Well, it wouldn't be.
Popping out.
It wouldn't be the base of the building, although I can show you one that has that, that's.
I can show you one too and it's not pretty.
Well, I have, I, I have some that are, that are, you know, that use that exact mustard, that dark mustard color effectively, you know. But again, it's, it's the other two colors that make the difference.
I think it's almost too much to, to add.
See, I'm sure.
I understand that they want their tenant to, to say, okay, this is the color I want, but that's almost.
I would, I would rather be given the choices that say, you know, base color, accent, one accent two.
Okay.
And that would be the way to present this, that we could approve the whole damn palette.
Right.
That way, some of those little colors, like that mustard.
You can kind of picture it then.
Yeah.
Would you like if we were to pre-approve a, a list, you know, a, a whole palette for, for administrative application? We could do it that way too.
I would like you to take those paint colors that are in that book and pull them out and say, and have this group look at that and say, look, this is, these are the colors.
Right.
Now, now, how they, how they put them together and artistically use them, you know.
But we could, I mean, you could pre-approve, I hadn't thought of that before. Pre-approving not just a range of colors that don't have any relationship to each other, but a set of threes, you know what I mean? Like a palette and, and a set of palettes.
Or, or we don't, or that's not the only, we're not saying that's the only ones, but these would be like.
Yeah.
Pre-approved.
Right.
I think we could get away, I was on a board before.
Yeah.
That did that.
Okay.
And, and used that exact book. Now, it's not as easy as you think because what you have to do somehow is look up the original color and then match it to like Sherwin-Williams latest paint card.
Right.
Visually, so good luck with that. But, but you'll ha, it's, that's what I did, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, that has kind of made it click in my head to put these in a palette for building, you know what I mean, relating it to a building, that'd be good.
That way, if they pick those three and one's a base building and, and the two accents, you can say, yep, we don't even have to, you know, necessarily vote on that necessarily, although we should.
Yeah, only I think, because I also think the type of building it is would, would then determine the color. So if you have this predetermined list of colors, but you have a building that.
It would have to be that right time period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, because you may have a building that's not.
Yeah.
Anywhere close to Victorian, but it's still, it still has to be approved by us and those colors wouldn't look right at all on it.
Exactly. So you'd have to have a Victorian type building of that time period. Those would be pre-approved. If you're, if you're a Greek Revival or something which we do have around here, that would not be appropriate for that building.
Right. And I would play it that way too.
With regards to this certificate of appropriateness, we, or we can't go forward then?
Table it. Why don't we just table it until he gives us the three?
That's fine.
Okay. So do we have a motion to table it?
Motion to table it. Second.
Motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is tabled, the resolution is tabled.
And then just make note of our suggestion of how to do that.
Yeah.
And then we'd be fine presenting that to their tenants or whatever, I think.
Okay. All right.
Let's move on to the next resolution?
Apologize for my lateness, guys. Aren't you late?
You were excused.
I was excused.
Yeah, we already excused.
You can leave now.
You should have told me I, I stayed. Kidding.
No, it's much better. Next resolution?
A resolution requesting a recommendation for a City of Pickwa facility honorary naming policy to be forwarded to the city commission. So I have attached a policy document. I didn't, I didn't brush up, Gary, you had, you caught a grammatical error that will be changed for the city commission's version. But what this is, backing up maybe, and it could, there might be more history than this even. But in two thousand and seven, there was a diversity committee that the City of Pickwa had. They, from that era, there was a policy adopted on how names for facilities would be conducted. Later, because the diversity committee was involved in that process and how, in the steps to getting something named, and then disbanded, it was rescinded in twenty fifteen. So the, the policy was canceled and we were left with no policy on how it is that anybody is supposed to propose a name, propose a renaming of something. So it's come up several times. We actually tried to take the park area behind the power plant, which has the overlook, and name that last year. It got, it got kind of controversial because people didn't realize that, that that naming policy had gone away. And so there was a lot of confusion on what was supposed to happen, who's supposed to, you know, who gets the right to propose a name and then, and then have that be adopted. So what this is, this policy is meaning to do is, you know, here's the list of things that you can name. There's facilities, there's parks, there's honorary street names. You can rename facilities potentially where, where that is appropriate. And then, and then gives parameters on how that would work. So basically, the city manager would determine which board, that is an active board, would be the most involved in an honorary name. This doesn't change anything about how the planning commission reviews subdivisions and real names as they're related to addresses. Doesn't change any address if you were, you know, adding an honorary street name. And so I think I have a list, actually. There's the, so the, the boards that may be involved in this would be the Community Diversity Committee, the Energy Board, Golf Advisory Board, Park Board, Tree Committee and Utility Board. And those would be respective of a facility that had something to do with them. So parks, you know, we're talking about a pavilion in a park or some kind of building in a park. Obviously, they're the ones who are involved. Very occasionally or seldomly are the others, you know, in the mix. But, but there's a power systems building and there's a power plant. And so if there were a name being proposed, this is a way to have public and community input in the process, which is exactly what we want to do.
The only thing is, this is purely honorary?
Mm-hmm.
I haven't, I haven't refreshed my, my, I didn't refresh what the policy is on non- honorary, actual like Hans Pavilion or Fountain Park, changing those names.
It would be the same, same, well, so in those cases, those are honorary names. That, that would fall under this category.
Those are honorary names?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you might not, in, they would follow this procedure.
Okay.
Now, I guess that's the honorary adjective is really just contrasting to like an actual street name. So if you're looking at Veterans Memorial Parkway versus Ash Street, you know, it's going to be Ash Street, but you can layer on top of that Veterans Memorial Parkway. As far as facilities go, I guess it's a good point that that's less honorary. It's really just designating an actual name. But usually it's in honor of someone or something or some kind of a, you know, representation of a flower or whatever it is that you, you're going to name it after.
So these are for city facilities. We're not actually changing the actual road name. Like this could become the Lucy Fest Commission Room or something like that.
Could, yeah.
Something.
Yep.
But you can also make a, a, a large donation and get some.
And then get your name on it, yeah. Like Alexander Stadium, but that's not a city.
Right, but if.
That's, that's through the Board of Education.
But if, if, if the city owned that stadium, then you could buy your name on it.
Right, first, you know, with, with, whatever the.
Right, like the hotel, the, the library, you could, you could call it, you know, if I make a large donation, it could be the Brandon Hotel.
That's right, absolutely. They don't, it doesn't have to, they don't have to be, okay. Yeah, I have no, what, what, any thoughts on this?
There's only one section that I thought we had to look at is, under section two in the second line, it says, it says, well, it starts by saying, "City facility names should be unique within Pickwa having their lasting significance." And then the part I question is, "Be familiar to a majority of citizens." Because we have named things after an historic person who nobody knows, a majority of people would know, a small group would know. And I don't think that necessarily has to be, a majority would have to know them. And I don't, you, you see what I mean? Like Goodrich Giles Park, for example, a very, a majority of people would not know who he was and what his deal was.
Right.
But that shouldn't exclude him necessarily. But that shouldn't exclude him necessarily if he has significance, um because a majority of people don't know a lot.
I can change his phrasing to.
I don't know, clue.
I mean, I mean, you know, if if you expect a majority, if you expect over ten thousand people to know a name in Pickwa.
Right.
I mean, that's a fairly limited one unless they're, you know, but a historical figure would not be known by a majority of the people, and that should not exclude them.
Just say to the citizens.
I can say, you know, city facility names should be unique within Pickwa and have a lasting significance, um.
And and be easy to recall.
And be easy to recall.
Or even even, I mean.
That's fine, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, that's, that way, you're not excluding historical folks that nobody knows, but have done a lot.
Right.
How did you demonstrate the majority of citizens knew that?
Yeah, and and if they don't, then are you going to exclude someone who did something significant, just even though most people don't know about it, that they shouldn't be excluded?
I think maybe having, you know, having a lasting significance.
Maybe and stop it, maybe just stop it there.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
I think just stop it there, and that 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 takes care of the.
I think there is uh maybe some desire that that a facility would be named for something that has meaning to a lot of people in town, whether and not simply one person.
Right.
I think that's, that's kind of the aim, uh not necessarily a majority, that's kind of an extreme push, you know, but to to say that, you know, it's, I don't know, I guess if you were to donate something and you were naming something on those bases, maybe the rules are a little bit different, but.
Yeah, but Goodrich Giles is a real good example.
Right.
Up down on twenty-five A, and most people would not know who he is.
That's true.
I didn't know it was a person.
Yeah, it's a person. Uh he was a a black guy in twenties or something, I forget what he was, but.
He donated to the Mays Opera House, and he was like, I guess, very highfalutin gentleman, who had a lot of wealth at that time, which was unique for an African-American at the time. And he donated to that, to the Mays Opera House, and, wait, the Mays Opera House is in Pickwa.
It's over there.
Yeah, right there.
And there was another um theater, a historic theater in Dayton, that he was very famous for, so. And then also the Cyrene AME Church, which is on the other side of the YMCA building, he he built that.
Okay.
So, no, I wouldn't say everybody knows that.
But not, yeah, very few would know that, certainly not a majority.
Right, right.
Um but.
That's good enough, yeah, no, we can just leave it at that.
I mean, that's a good example, someone who might not
Mm-hmm.
you know, get to consider it, even though he should have been, right, so.
Right. Yeah, we were going to name the park, uh the John Gallagher Park, which I'm sure nobody knows who that is, and yeah, it it's very significant to that.
The guy with the hammer and watermelons in there.
Yeah.
The little story in there or something?
There's always a lot of stories, but that's the only thing I saw that uh was in there.
I I thought it was very uh detailed, there's no rush to naming these things, so there was a, it was a very uh detailed process with reviews. I at, a lot of public comment. It was, I thought it was a good process. So, do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Uh do we have to move to make those changes?
Um no, I'll I'll always make the changes that you guys require.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
So, we move in a second to approve resolution number PC fifteen dash twenty-three?
As amended.
As amended?
As amended, yeah.
The planning commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and finds that the proposed policy is suitable, and provides a clear process for community members. Now, therefore, be it resolved, uh the board has made a motion in a second, and the voting record is hereby recorded as follows. Could you poll the commissioners?
Gary Koenig?
Aye.
Shannon Brandon?
Aye.
Brad Bupp?
Aye.
Eddie Harvey?
Aye.
Joe Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution number PC fifteen dash twenty-three is approved. That is the end of our new business, is there any other business?
Yes, there is. Um the the June date for the special hearing for the quarry rehearing, that is probably not going to work for everybody involved, unfortunately, so I am going to give, I'm going to throw out dates in September. Um and that would be Monday or Wednesday throughout that month, I'm going to give you options for that. Hopefully, we have some, we're thinking that not everybody is going to be in town all summer, we're we're always going to have one of the team that's not going to be there.
Is there a drop dead date for that, like the last possible?
No, there isn't, surprisingly, no, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, you know, I, yeah, I should report as well, that we, so, we'd had, for code Pickwa, for the development code update, we'd had the um and I think many of you were there, Mike Sherry came and spoke about the, he wanted an amendment to the code, so that we could prohibit future quarry expansion or new quarries from being introduced beyond what has been proposed for, you know, this this particular quarry. Um and then they've they've continued to talk about that through time, so I, you know, I asked the city commissioners if they had, if they could provide some feedback to me on whether they wanted to see that amendment, because I, we'd keep hearing, and then I keep getting silence and not really a lot of affirmation about what to do next, and they did say they wanted to see that amendment. So, we will put in that code update, uh you know, over here on the side, if you would like to adopt it with this exhibit B, um to have a prohibition on quarries. I've been given the approval from Frank Patrizio that we are able to do that, so that's something that they could vote on, which is good, because it doesn't, it doesn't derail the code Pickwa project, it just gives them the option to do this if they want to do this. And it's, it is, I would have preferred that we could have had this discussion in planning commission first, so that we could have talked about the land use pros and cons of quarries. Um but this is, I think politically, is just the way it it's going.
So, on the next, next Tuesday, which is the third reading.
Yes.
They could approve the the code, and they indicated they were going to approve, uh no longer would quarries be allowed.
Four of them were there, and it seemed like everybody wanted to see it. It, I don't think, to me, it could be, it it could always be, we'd like to see it, and then put the matter to rest by voting on it. But it did seem to me like they were interested in in prohibiting future quarries.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
No, not for me.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Um September seems kind of late to be delaying this, with all the talk about it. Uh I thought even June was a little late.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Actually, that might be good, though.
You think it's good to wait?
Let it cool off.
It's, it it isn't really a move to do any of those things, it's just that the appellants weren't available for that June date, and we s- I don't, I I wasn't involved in the talk on further scheduling, but it seemed like they weren't able to get together on even the following couple of months, everybody being in town at the same time, so I was told to see if we could do September.
All right, all right, just want, it just seems late, but.
Yeah, but they, what they really want is all five of you to be there, so we'll take it slow on getting the right date.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else?
Rel- relating to that topic, um I know that there were several areas, I I wasn't at that meeting, but there were several areas that were relying on other areas outside the city to enforce certain things, like vibration noise, a few other things like that. And that seemed to be a uh a question of how how that was going to be done, who, how efficient. Uh, but we get to have more information, I know we have plenty of time now to get it, but um
Sure.
We get more information on how that works, who would be responsible, um and how would, you know, how it would be addressed, since we, the city would not be involved. And there was questioning of whether they would do anything and all that, so is there a way to get a little more information on that, how that whole procedure works?
Yeah, I can def- I can provide that. It's it's the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Right.
So, it, um yes, and there's, there are a lot of things like that in this town, where there's explosives involved, we don't regulate explosives, or there's, you know, uh a lot, plenty, you can think of all sorts of examples that are regulated outside of here.
And then, you know, how they would, how they would proceed, what the uh method would be for someone to uh question, or to um ask for a review or whatever.
Sure.
Uh someone's case would be to look into something that they don't maybe agree with, or they want proof, or all those things, that I don't think
Yeah.
we had quite, all that there, that's time, maybe we'll have time to get all that, so it's a little, we'll know
Yeah.
how how it'll be handled, so it's not a kind of a question mark.
Yeah, and I would say that it's, I I can think of examples where it's, it it's fair to um to say that regardless of whether or not another organization or level of government is overseeing something, we still don't feel comfortable with it for X, Y, or Z. You can do that, or you can say, no, I think that this is prob- you can do both things um with a special use. So, it's not as if just because there is another regulatory agency that you're now your hands are tied somehow to evaluate the situation, you can always evaluate it through the special use, so.
Yeah, I just think it'd be nice to to understand a little better and
Yep.
and uh maybe even, can we get a representative here?
Yeah, I I will definitely invite represent representative from Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
To answer questions and things.
Okay.
And then one thing I had is, I read the decision of of the courts.
Mm-hmm.
And there were some very specific things in there that they said that we had to do.
Yep.
So, I didn't know if there's going to be kind of like a review before we have the meeting.
So, that way, we understand what we have to do. Yes, um I hope I mentioned it before, but there, we will schedule either one-on-one or two at the same time with Frank Patrizio to go over the basically, it's um it's the quarry's lawyers and the appellants' lawyers, who have discussed terms and agreed to take it da- back down to the planning commission on these terms. Um we had a very bad, very bad quality recording, we were still using the Zoom application, which was fine when we have a room like this, and it wasn't fine at all when there were this many people in the room, and and um it it just didn't pick up the quality of sound that we needed to get a really good transcript for a three-hour meeting. So, that was part of the reason that they decided to come back to the planning commission, but also, you know, with some of these rules in place, there they have asked for the ability to do things like cross-examining and using their lawyers as they would in a courtroom, and the judge agreed, and all the parties agreed. So, yeah, we were going to have to have a quick training session on how that would be conducted.
What?
So, it's, we're having a separate.
Cross-examining?
Yes, yep.
So, you were changing the whole rules?
For this, for this session, yeah, so we're, it's going to get a little bit more legal, technical than our typical meetings. And I wouldn't have preferred that, but it's what they negotiated and.
I'm not a judge. I
Right.
know the law.
Right, but we're a quasi-judicial board.
Right.
So, but but that's what I'm saying, in that decision, if you get a chance, you can go on the website and look at it.
Oh, is it out there? Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they scanned in the image of the decision, and you can go out there and you can read, and it specifically to, the judge lays it out. This is what you will do, this is how you will do it, this is who will swear people in. I mean, it gives, it's very specific as to what we have to do, and and what they can do with like she said, cross-examination.
Is it on the city website, or where?
No, it's, you go to the Miami County Court Records.
Okay.
And you can look it up, if you look up City of Pickwa.
Stacy Rawls.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Circuit Court or whatever.
Well, it's not even cir- it's not Circuit Court, it's just Miami Miami County Court Records. It will pull up common pleas and municipal court records. You put the search in as the business, the City of Pickwa, and then over on the right, you'll see some options, there's a whole bunch of stuff. Just click on the one for open, and that will bring up the only open cases that the City of Pickwa has, and.
It's still an open case.
It was the last time I looked at it.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be, thank you, I'll go for it.
But, and the one benefit, the one benefit to the agreement kind of falling outside of the normal terms is that the public comment can can go differently as well, so you know, it's important to capture all the viewpoints, but you don't have to necessarily have everybody line up one at a time for six hours. We get to organize in advance on how that would, how that would bundle up together.
So, do you have access to this?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Can you just email it to us?
Will do.
All all of us?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great, yeah, like to see.
And I assume Frank will be there to help us.
Yes.
Even at that meeting.
Yep, it's, a lot of this is, I mean, you guys will be asking a lot of questions and and doing your due diligence to make a decision, but a lot of it is going to be city reports, and then they are going to present and a lot of information in an organized fashion, the way they would do it. Exhibit A, exhibit B, here's this, here's that, and they will be, uh you know, they would like to have the opportunity to negate the other's argument, which is why cross-examination is is possible. So, if one's, if one makes a claim about anything, about dust, or about, you know, well, the vibrations are are pretty minimal, then the other's able to say, well, I've got evidence to the contrary, and and they can, they can ha- you know, they're able to do that.
Yeah, Frank has to be here, because he has to swear his name.
I'll swear by God.
Hey, anything else? It sounds like a wonderful time.
Oh, yeah, it does. I can't wait.
I can't wait.
That's why, that's why, let it, let it cool down, Jesus.
Wait, okay.
But sometimes, sometimes you want those things out of the way, though.
Yeah, but I don't, I think cooler heads may prevail, if we just give us a little time.
I think it'll just build like a volcano myself, but uh.
Good.
I just don't want fifty people here to come up to speak and say the same thing every time.
It won't, it it won't, that's part of what's in
That's.
That. Per order.
Okay.
Be interesting.
Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The planning commission meeting is adjourned. Thank you.